Tonight is April 4th, it is 6:01. I'd like to call our meeting of the Halifax Elementary School Giving Meeting Key Order. Of course, we need to open the meeting with a school choice hearing. Dr. Prue?
Sure, school choice allows a parent or guardian to enroll a different child in a school district other than the district in which your child lives. A receiving district can withdraw from school choice only if a school committee holds a public hearing on this issue and then votes to withdraw from the school choice program prior to June 1st. The hearing and the school committee's vote can occur at the same meeting and may occur at a scheduled school committee meeting provided there is notice to the public that this item will be discussed and that members of the public are afforded an opportunity to participate and make their positions known to the school committee prior to the vote. A timed decision and vote by a school committee to withdraw from school choice is effective only for the following school year. The resolution on which the school committee votes to withdraw from school choice must contain the reasons for the withdrawal. So the vote would be whether or not you choose to withdraw from school choice and why. School districts may not consider or discriminate based on race, color, religious creed, national origin, sex, gender identity, age, sexual orientation, ancestry, athletic performance, physical handicap, physical need, academic performance, or proficiency in the English language. If the number of applicants exceeds the number of available seats, the selection of students must be on a random basis. The selection process must take place prior to July 1st.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion or do we need to have a discussion first? Let's have a motion first.
I look like a discussion.
Okay, we need a motion first. Want to make it?
Typically, we get the recommendation before the motion.
From administration?
Yes.
Okay. Does administration have a recommendation on whether or not registered participates in school choice?
At this time, we have relatively full class load, so we need our recommendation not to participate in school choice. However, the school committee should consider that the school choice tuition for students in regular education is $5,000 per student. For students attending half-day kindergarten tuition is $2,500 per student. And for students eligible for special education, an additional improvement is added to the base to cover the cost of these services, but I don't have the exact amount of that. So that's something that the school committee may choose to consider. Principal Bowdre in his budget presentation included the current recommended staffing for classes and the class sizes. So that's something that the school committee should consider and determine whether or not they want to participate or opt out of school choice.
I would make a recommendation. Well, I guess I would make the motion to opt out of school choice.
Okay, I need a second. Second? Thank you. Now we can have a discussion about whether or not we're going to participate in school choice. Go ahead.
So my question is obviously class size and then finances. I mean, it doesn't seem like it would really help us in a financial sense to do school choice because you don't get that much money. Like, I mean, thinking about finances, maybe we can, you know, help, but it doesn't, I mean, from the numbers you just gave, it doesn't seem like it's as substantial because you have another student and everyone has costs and it's not, am I correct in that view?
So typically, in years past, we in Halifax have decided to withdraw from school choice. I believe Limpden did something where they only participated in school choice for a couple of grades, but not the entire building, which is also something we can entertain. But in the past, due to the fact that we have budget constraints already, it's not financially beneficial for us to open our school up to more students in view of our budgetary burden. That's pretty much my question. Okay. Anyone else have any comments regarding school choice? Okay, well seeing that, I will take a vote.
This is a public hearing.
Okay.
So it's in the public.
Okay. Does anybody from the public have any comments regarding school choice? Okay. Seeing none, then I will entertain a vote at this time. All those in favor of Halifax withdrawing from school choice. I oppose. Okay. We are not participating in school choice. So that closes our public budget hearing. And at this time, I would like to open our regular meeting at 6:06 PM. We always open our meeting with a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'm going to ask that we take an executive session out of order so that we can move to the police chief and the school resource discussion. So I would make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, sorry, A4, to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect there to be in the selectmen's meeting room and to adjourn back to regular session.
Can anyone get a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll call Jim. Yes, to order?
Yes.
Myself and the yes. Yes. No. Okay. We will be in the selectmen's meeting room and we'll be back shortly. Took you long. We are back in regular session, it is 6:35 PM. Thanks everybody for your patience. We have now the police chief. Next on the agenda, is anybody in the audience like to be acknowledged or scheduled to speak at this time? Please raise your hand. Be right here, no? Okay, four of you? Okay, five? Great. I just asked that in the, you know, respect of time that we don't draw the song for too long, and I appreciate that. Thank you. Who wants to go first? Please, by all means, go for it, just state your name. And Firewood?
Thank you. My name is Richard Bay-Ranchen, Halifax Teachers Association. I want to thank the school committee for letting me speak tonight. To begin, I'd like to share the timeline for the last few years of the entire committee who may or may not know the back and forth that has gotten us to this point in time. It's important to understand why the teachers' union is making its plea tonight for a fair and respectful contract moving forward. After receiving a 1.6% raise for one year in January of 2021, seven months after our old contract expired in June of 2020, negotiations started back up in February of 2021. The starting point was an offer of 0% until finance committee and final budget was set for the upcoming fiscal school year of 2022, 2023. This back and forth went on throughout the summer of 2021 with offers from Halifax Teachers Union for a three-year contract at 2-2-2, 2% for three years. That was denied. HDA then requested stipends that all of the town employees received, and that was denied. School committee then offered a one-year contract for 1% at the HDA, and then the HDA counter offered with a two-year contract of 2% and 2%, plus a stipend of $1,000, which was denied. School committee then made a last counter offer of two years at 1% and 1.5%, which the HDA brought back to our union who voted it down. This now meant mediation was to begin. We had our first mediation meeting with the district and the state on February 8th of this year. The school committee offered once again a one-year contract for 1%. HDA tried to get that to change by asking the school committee to at least consider resurrecting the last offer for two years at 1% and 1.5%, which is where we left off until a second meeting was originally scheduled for March 9th. The school committee since then put that second meeting off a few times due to not having a quorum to meet. They finally agreed to our second mediation meeting for May 3rd, which is three months after our first meeting, which brings me to my last statement. I've been a teacher here for almost 30 years. I've been negotiating for more than half that time. I've considered the town of Halifax and HES as my second family. I've run over 20 years of fundraisers for graduating Halifax students from Silver Lake High School, regional with a Halifax hoopsuit basketball game with raffles, shirts, food, prizes. I've run after-school sports programs for the children in grades 3 through 6 with Mr. Ruiz, youth and rec director Richard Steele, and now being one of the senior members, which I can't believe, and lead negotiator of our HDA union, wanted to share that I've been at the top scale of our contract for three years now. And due to our inability to reconcile three-year contracts, which is what we're really trying to do here, that coincide with the cost of living increases, health insurance increases of 3% every year, the inflation rates skyrocketing every year, and this year being the actual highest it's ever been in recorded history, my own paycheck has decreased the last three years being at the top of the step. This makes it difficult to survive. It makes it difficult to put my own kids through college at the given time in my life. We've been without a contract now for nine months, and to see what town employees received in stipends as well as percentages given to other schools within our district, we're asking that we get to the table if you could before May 3rd.
Just got to stand over here. Everybody back here as well. My name is Steve Ruiz, Halifax Teachers Association, and I share a lot of the same sentiments that Mr. Bay-Ranchen just shared. I negotiated alongside him over the course of the last few contracts, and our message is simple: invest more in teachers. Right? It is unfortunate that we are here tonight to discuss the disappointing progress of these negotiations as it relates to our wages, but really, we have no choice. Mr. Bay did a nice job kind of giving perspective on how things are, and everybody feels that we know. Okay? But to put a little context into why we feel we can't settle for 1%, okay? I just want to share some of the perspectives that I had along the negotiation journey that we've been on. Again, we're without a contract for nine months, okay? It has been very clear through these negotiations that investing in teacher salaries has never been a serious priority for your subcommittee in negotiations, and here's the context for why. We were optimistic when we learned that neighboring Kingston settled quickly in the winter with a two-year, 2% annual contract. Limpden settled quickly at one year, I'm sorry, at 2 and 1/4%. Again, early in the winter before we even got to our first three initial meetings. They chose to respect those teachers and those bargaining units and gave them their deals without any opening of the contract and reward them for what they've done over the two years that we've been through, all of us have been through. But they settled with us early. Your subcommittee said no to our proposals when we offered our multi-year 2% raise. We noticed in the initial drafts of the budget that the teacher salaries were not level-funded, showing actually a decrease of $36,000 from fiscal '21 to fiscal year '22. We pointed this out to you and demanded you continue to level fund and invest it back into this budget. We got no response. Earlier in the spring, as unprecedented stimulus money was approved for towns and schools, we were again optimistic. At that time, and still, a large majority of that money was and is still unspent. The purpose of that money was to help cities and towns navigate through the pandemic, building and maintaining budgets, as well as funding programs to help students catch back up. This funding is sustained for the next two years through fiscal year '24. We argued that you have a once-in-a-lifetime amount of federal money to help you build your budget. Please invest in us. The answer was silent. When your committee said no, we worked creatively to counter-propose an offer that was closer to the number that you proposed, but it addressed our needs, helping teachers that rely on the cost of living increases to keep pace with health insurance premiums and other living increases. But again, the committee again said no. Okay, as June approached, we started to see reports of inflation, and social security benefits were going up nearly at 6%. This is important because in the last negotiation, the school committee used social security COLA to justify the one-year deal at 1.6% that we took. Again, that was following a 2% deal. We took a lower because it was the pandemic and nobody knew what to expect, and we embraced that. So when we pointed out at our concerns for inflation now at 6% and we just asked for 2%, again, the committee was silent. I'm getting close to the end. I thank you for your time. In the fall, when we informed that when we were informed that town employees were being offered a stipend, we were once again hopeful that this could be a supplement to the school's offer or the school committee's offer, and we could recommend it back to our membership. But when that request denied, leaving school employees as the only employees in town not to receive the stipend, we were actually crushed, shocked, and left disrespected. Your subcommittee and the members of the selectmen's board cited investments for teachers in laptops, air purifiers, substitute teaching, and teachers, potential installation of air conditioning for the whole school building as reasons for why we did not receive the stipend. Those additions are still no excuse to not invest in our salaries. Those were an investment in our working conditions. We deserve to be prioritized like all of the other town employees. Invest in your teachers. The town has the money. Stay at the table with us. We hope to meet before the next scheduled negotiation mediation, which is, I believe, May 3rd. Let's continue to work together on a fair three-year contract, a three-year contract that will allow this school committee to plan future budgets, that will allow teachers to plan and find stability for the next three years. Let's get back to putting 100% of our energy into the students we serve. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to start by saying thank you for allowing me this time to come here and speak.
You speak, you introduce yourself?
Oh, yes, that's coming, sorry. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Tiffany Orbis Easter. This is my fifth year as a kindergarten teacher at HES and my sixth year teaching. I really just wanted to come up here tonight and shed some light on the reality of teaching in Halifax right now. I know I speak for many others when I say this, and as a sixth-year teacher with a master's degree working towards paying off undergrad student debt, keeping up with the cost of living, and paying for our rising health insurance costs, right now, I'm forced to work three jobs. We didn't come into this profession for the money. We came into this because we love working with kids. At HES, our number one goal is to create the best possible learning experience for our students, but we can't put students first if we're putting teachers last. I hope we can work together as a team to create a fair contract for teachers moving forward, and thanks again for being able to speak.
Hi, my name is Carol Tmello. I am a parent of a Halifax elementary school student. First, thank you to the school committee. I want to give my thanks and appreciation to you all for allowing me to speak tonight. I am the first to admit that I do not know, nor should I know, the intricacies, complications, and struggles that relates to all the tasks that you guys are assigned to do. I recognize there is never enough time in the day to accomplish what needs to be done. However, I am aware that the teachers have been working with an outdated contract for this current school year. Prior to, about six minutes ago, I was not fully educated on what the contract entails or what was being asked. However, but I do know that when tasks and responsibilities are prolonged, when it takes this long to come to a conclusion and decisions are not made, that there is a general perception that the item that has yet to be accomplished is not a priority. This should take precedent, and this is a priority. I know budgets have been a challenge this year, however, this is not new. As a community member, I knew this back in the fall as budget increases for some line items, excuse me, and those concerns were made at a school committee meeting then. I hope the Halifax Elementary School Committee is working together to come to an agreement. This is a disruption to an already stressful few years. I am putting myself in the shoes of teachers who, like every human, appreciate the feeling of being valued. Unfortunately, the mere act of not handling this yet, in my opinion, as a community member, likely could be contributing to decrease morale and the general feeling of being underappreciated, not valued. Teachers, there's a lot here. I hope you know that you are valued, appreciated, and incredibly respected. The dedication that you all show to your jobs is evident every single day, and I for one am very thankful. I hope that you can work together appropriately and fairly to come to an agreement that shows how much this community values public education and the incredibly hard-working teachers here at Halifax Elementary School. I know you all can get there. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate you letting me say a few words.
My name is Jim Keegan, daughter of fifth grade Halifax Elementary School, 338 Elm Street. I also have a daughter at Silver Lake Middle School. She went through all seven years here at Halifax Elementary. My wife and I were both born and raised in the town of Halifax, and when we were married, we said that we wanted to make sure that our children went through the Silver Lake system. It took us a while to find our dream home in Halifax, which we did, a lot longer than we had wanted. We couldn't be happier with the education that they're getting and how lucky we are to have our daughters cross-street Halifax Elementary School. Anyone that I talk, again, 1974 I've been in town, and anyone that I talk to who are friends of mine or acquaintances, I'm speaking as a parent tonight, have said the same thing, how lucky they are to have this school and these teachers. And I just want to say that this is my, I don't want to say that. I am, I support our school, I support our teachers, and I just want to caution anyone, whether it be a teacher or administrator, somebody from out of town, or somebody who manages unions, anyone for that matter, just to use caution when you're using social media for certain things, because certain things on social media can come across as being very divisive. And especially when I became a member of the board sitting in front of us, it was, there was a question of being united, welcome into our school. Everybody has a place in that school, and everybody should have a place in that school. Okay? So when we're using social media and using bits and pieces, things to fit agenda, it doesn't do anything but separate us. Okay? So as a parent, I would hope that everybody would use caution when they use the media. I just want to, again, as a parent in this town, thank our teachers.
Anyone else before we move on? Well, thank you all for being here tonight. I wish we had as much attendance for our budget meeting. That was six weeks ago. It's that most unpopular meeting that we conduct throughout the school year, and we certainly didn't have this level of concern. And as a taxpayer in this town, you certainly should be concerned with that, and I hope to see you all at our town meeting in May. So thank you for being here. Next on the agenda is Halifax Police MLU and House School Vote. We broke into the new executive session. I want to thank the police chief and the school resource officer for being part of that conversation. We're fortunate enough to have a police officer on our board, so he brings insight into this issue that many of us are ignorant to, so I'd just like to thank everybody for having that conversation. Right now, we've decided to...
I would make a motion that we ask Mr. Keegan to work on this with the police chief through chair of support with me, and have it updated for the next meeting. That's what we do.
Now, there's a motion on the floor. Can I get a second?
Second.
Do, you're okay with it?
I'm fine with that.
Excellent, thank you, and I appreciate your work on this issue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. We have our regular meeting minutes that, oh, wait, did I skip? Oh, I checked the wrong ones. Is this the parent who's here?
She is not here tonight. The good news is, is that upon examining the state information, we will not be looking for an increase to school meals this year.
Excellent.
Just looking to Christine Healy to confirm.
It appears that we will not be looking for an increase. Based on the current information given to us, we will not be looking for any school meals.
Sorry, can I ask a question?
Sure.
How long are the free lunches extended?
Just during the school year.
And the school year.
And it's not been extended beyond that. The college application due to something on that, we have not, we have not heard anything.
Okay, thanks. So with that information, I assume we do not need to do any work at this time because there is no increase in the cost of school. Thank you for that information. We have some regular meeting minutes from March 7th circulating. Everybody's had a chance to look at them and can entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Excuse me, can I just ask, who second did I just say?
I made the motion.
Yeah, warrants. Warrants are in front of me. I do have a single signature warrant update.
There were no singles to get your warrants, but as you mentioned, the warrants that you have right now, there are nine warrants total of $461,999.26.
Thank you. Correspondence and reports, I don't have anything. No business, not on anything. Unfinished business, I don't see any on the table at this time. Future agenda items. But as always, anyone in the committee can email myself and request, and I have a meeting for something for our future meeting. Standing committee's policy did not eat negotiations.
We'll have a regular session tonight.
Yep, we have a second session at the end of our meeting. Pat, the Pat meeting?
The Pat, which I cannot attend. Their next meeting will be coming up Thursday, which I will be attending.
Okay, I look forward to the report at our next meeting.
I'll have information regarding April, January.
Okay, thank you. You can write? Actually, just, Steele outside.
What's that?
I just saw Mr. Steele outside.
Was he here?
Yeah, he was stopping by downstairs. They had to move Mr. Steele.
So he, I had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Steele, as always, to thank him for his hard work. Saturday, this Saturday, if rain or shine, there'll be an egg hunt. It is, last year, it was 300-plus students, the children. So rain or shine, 10:30 to 1:00 PM, the egg hunt will be at the Halifax Elementary School gym. There will be, there'll be a bunny there for pictures, and food and drink will also be there. The flyer, I did not have, well, it's on my phone. Also, just to mention that Babe Ruth Field, I guess there was some pretty severe sink holes in the Babe Ruth field, and he's working together with Steve Haywood of the Highway Department to fix those. And also, there is a, there's adult volleyball, and that's going to begin on April 29th, 7:00 PM, to whenever they finish. She said whenever. Thank you.
PTO?
A lot. First of all, I will start by saying that the book fair this year was the highest success ever, $15,000. I think the day of parent-teacher conferences alone was six grand, so that is huge. So sense of normalcy is returning, field trips are now starting to get back in the schedules. I know some of the... I know some of the grades have been asking the PTO for money, which is good, so I don't know the exact what the teachers will be doing for field trips this year, but they're starting. The newspaper club has been approved by Youth and Rec. This will be for just grades four through six. I know at the PTO meeting a few weeks ago, they were looking for two volunteers to chaperone, and they have to be core HU if they're doing that. Youth and Rec has been moving forward with the Adult Volleyball League, and I guess there's more information coming soon for that. Couple of dates to remember, Field Day will be Monday, June 13th, and the Rain Date will be Tuesday, June 14th. And then sometime in June, they're doing the BOGO Book Fair, and that's to kick off the summer reading program. And the next PTO meeting is April 13th at 6:30, and that is the Google.
That's fantastic, you used Google to book there.
Yeah, six grand just alone in one day is...
That's great.
Yeah.
Capital budget?
I know that items for the school are within the budget.
But there's one article more.
Multiple articles.
That was the elevator.
The elevator, yeah.
There's three for Silver Lake.
Oh, sorry, just for the elevator. Admin review did not meet, but I believe you are.
We have a joint meeting coming up, and so there may be an admin review coming up soon. It will be, you'll be receiving my evidence towards Michael's and the standards for superintendent, and the chair of that committee will be sending something out to school committee members so that you all have an opportunity to participate in that evaluation.
Thank you.
Meeting 31 will have to meet in April.
Thank you. Principal Lordrick?
Hi. I just kind of want to point it out there, you know, to just recognize the fact that we don't appreciate the teachers enough, and I don't say it enough, and I hope that it goes a long way, and I think Mrs. Tenelli put it out there, that, you know, we do kind of appreciate all the teachers too, so, especially the last two years, you know, were rough, and I wouldn't want to be beside anyone else in leading the ship the way it was, so they did a wonderful job, you know, trying to figure out how to teach during COVID, and it was just amazing what they were able to do and pull together, so hopefully, I know budget season's a tough, but just wanted to kind of put that out there. Thank you. So we've got enrollment staying strong at 566 students. I won't steal any, I was looking at PTO Book Fair, I was at 12,000, but Jen, you got to 15, so that's even better.
I talked to Sharon today, she said yes.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
That's just great, and we appreciate all the PTO has done making the book fair a success. Conferences, also, as I mentioned, we're doing that, we offer in-person, remote, and phone conferences, the teachers are juggling all of them together, may not have been perfect at times, finding that right balance, but teachers did an amazing job trying to go back and forth between in-person and remote and phone conferences. We took that because we felt that approach, because we felt that we got such a high success rate of meeting with families remotely, and I think we're able, if they're at work or they're at school or doing whatever, they could just hop on with teachers and just have that for the 10-minute meeting, so we might tweak it again a little bit next year, but we're always just kind of looking to make sure we have the highest return, meeting with parents and sharing all great things that are going on. Kindergarten registration, it went live February 7th, so make sure you get the information in, please, get more information that comes out as we go through orientation, we do tours, our programming, and then we do screenings that come up in the fall, so please make sure you get your registration in so we can make plans for next year.
Can I ask a question? How many registered you right now?
If Ellen were here, I would ask Ellen, which I apologize. It's usually a tough number, but I think right now it's between 70 and 80, but that's a rough estimate, so I can find out for you.
I'm just wondering where we are as compared to the class.
It really is a hard number, but usually that's why we're always trying to get the information out as quickly as possible, and then we try and gather all the contact information, and then our kindergarten teachers are going out to the preschool, trying to get as much data that we can so we can get an actual number, but the number changes all the way up until the first day of school.
I'm sure, maybe we've been over to somebody about, anytime really, I know, I was just curious where we're at.
I'll try and get you a number out, and get that out to you as quick. Our parent placement surveys going out, ready to make plans for next year, we're looking to get that up this week sometime so that app will break, and the teachers can get ready for pulling together classrooms for next year. And tomorrow, we kick off bedcasts, so hopefully you all got the notice, get your kids to bed early, fifth grade goes tomorrow, and Wednesday, and then grade six goes on Thursday and Friday, so get your kids to bed early, take good breakfast, get to school on time, please, 8:45 will be taken off in the morning, so, and this will be one of the first years that we're back to relatively normal, whereas we've had the last few years have been a little bit out of touch, so. And the last piece there, we just kind of one dimension, Melissa Farrell's done a lot of the work with our teachers about adopting a new ELA curriculum called Collaborative Classroom, so the teachers will be in the trenches for, they're going to do some professional development at the end of this year, maybe some for the summer and beginning of next year to get up to be ready to deliver that in very quick. And then we have some dates there down the bottom, next PTO meeting is on 13th, the 15th is the Friday of middle school for students and staff, the 18th is when spring vacation begins, and the 25th is when the school resumes, and 10th is the next.
Did you just say about the night school meeting?
Any town?
We have town, we have town meeting that night, so we're going to figure out how to best, but we do post, in case, we should all be there. But yeah, we'll figure out the town, the school committee meeting. Thank you.
Well, I think the night...
No, it's actually, that's why I did it, it's not right.
Yeah, the night is town meeting, but we typically plan for two nights of town, two nights.
It's so much fun.
All right.
Waiting for...
I bet you guys haven't had any plans.
Yeah, everybody was shocked, we were hoping we could get away from town meeting. All right, that's the only...
Our financials still holding up pretty well, we hear companies have never surprised us since our last meeting, we're still on the bottom line. One area that we've had some significant concerns here, Special Education Transportation, which we are working with the town on how we can make our work of this year and going forward. Also some unique ideas in the market are transferred to the sixth, that's what I think, to see if there are some moving forward with it. I would have to, we're just, I'm going to be able to get the balance, so we'll return to the town.
Excellent, thank you. Do you know what the balance is right now?
No, the town budget's four different lines, and we treat them all separately, so I, if you look at the financial, the other district, the other district, I think actually that would have $65,000 returned to the town, because I think that fewer students are each other attending, and the budget based on who will be able to supply.
Okay.
And then with our district, Special Education Transportation, we're still in a significant deficit, but like I said, we're working with the town to see what we can do for the share, and I think there's something that has special time we need to manage. Our district, Special Education Tuition, we're going to be trying to carry what we can in sort of a record that will offset next year's budget. And then the rate of the day, I don't know if that is accurate right now, because it's constrained between end of the year, we are focused on the local balance.
May. Thank you.
Just like to say thank you to Christine and to Marie and to Jill for working so hard on the deficit with the town. There's been a lot of meetings at Town Hall to try to come up with a financial solution that allows schools to move forward this, this little year and next this little year. So there's been a lot of work behind the scenes, and it's trying new things to try to get by this deficit, so I just wanted to say thank you to everyone.
Well, I'm grateful that we all have a good working relationship with, between the school department and the town department, make this hang a little less, a little more manageable. Mr. Lynch, I always see you, always up there.
Thank you, this evening under curriculum instruction and assessment, I'd like to go through the Student Opportunity Act Amendment, and then that will also cover the ESSER funds update related to the Math Interventionist Association.
That'd be great, thank you.
So I included a little bit of, this is a little bit of background on the Student Opportunity Act Amendment, just what the focus of the Student Opportunity Act is, just as a quick refresher, which legislation that in one sentence sought to address learning gaps in the Commonwealth by reapportioning some Chapter 70 funding, on slide three that we first submitted our Student Opportunity Act, our Student Opportunity Plan in 2020, and then Chapter 70 increases didn't happen in 2021 because of the pandemic and additional federal aid, but these funds were available in '22, '23, based on our demographics here in Halifax and our 554 students, that increase netted about $16,000 for the district. So each year, based on the legislation, we are required to amend our Student Opportunity Plan, so I submitted that, and my goal tonight would be to apprise the committee of the submission and see if you have any questions about that update. The next slide just covers what are, what gaps have been identified, so inside of the DESI system, there's a visual that helps to display any learning gaps that may be present, so you have that slide. Based on that information, we can see that we can aim to close some gaps related to low income or economically disadvantaged students, students with disabilities, English learners, and those three groups would comprise, state would classify as quote, high-needs students, so that's any student that would fall into one of those three groups. So our plan would just detail how we are committed to closing those gaps, so based on our numbers here in Halifax, 209 students would be identified as high-needs students. So the next step on that amendment is to submit some information about what our strategy is, so just like Mr. Bodry talked about, the implementation of our new Collaborative Classroom adoption, we're required to use a research-based strategy, so one of those strategies is to adopt a highly effective program, which Collaborative Classroom is, so on our submitted Student Opportunity Plan Amendment, we identify that what we're going to do is make progress with Collaborative Classroom, provide professional development, like Mr. Bodry said, we really appreciate the efforts of the teachers who pivoted Collaborative Classroom and CKLA to move us forward, and you know, we have professional development coming. Another research-based outcome is to support educators if we implement high-quality line curriculum, our professional development this year with Understanding by Design has made progress toward that. And lastly, we have a full-around inclusion and co-teaching for students with disabilities and English learners, so that position was moved into the local budget last year, I believe, that was 0.49, and with the school committee's decision this year to identify the use of ESSER funds to make that position full-time, that is another step that we will take to try and close the, some of the achievement gaps that we have. So those are the research-based outcomes that we identified that we will use to make sure that all students are succeeding in Halifax Elementary. So that's a quick overview of the Student Opportunity Act Amendment that was submitted, and also the, at the last school committee, it was requested that we investigate if the funds can be used to make that position 1.0. Halifax has been awarded sufficient funding through ESSER to be able to fund that position through the end of, through the, the time of that until ESSER expires, which is September 30th of 2024.
2024, you said? Oh, wow.
Yes, that's when ESSER funds have to be performed, September 30th, 2024.
So just to reiterate, there's a lot of us, but, no, no, it's fine, I'm glad, grateful for it. The position of the Math Interventionist can be funded through ESSER funds in Halifax as full-time position for the next two years.
Yes, at the 0.51, 0.49 is currently funded through the local budget as it stands.
To make it a full-time.
That is correct, so that would be 0.51 plus benefits for the next two school years.
I really appreciate you taking the time to dive into that, and I think it's definitely beneficial, both for our students, and I would argue to our staff to have that kind of support ongoing, so I appreciate you looking into that, and...
I have a question on the chronic absenteeism. I'm assuming that with returning school this past year, anytime anyone was sick or had anyone been around them, or for multiple reasons, we're going to see this number really climb at the elementary school, the data for next year. Do you know if they have taken into account the DESI requirement to, and the state health requirements to keep kids out so that this isn't seen as...
A negative for our district? Yeah, it's a good point.
I have heard that, it's a challenge for every district, I have not yet heard of the way that the state's going to change its measurement of that, I can look into it, but I have not yet been made aware of the change to the chronic absenteeism calculation. Thank you.
Well, that was pretty nice, well, number one, huh? Good job. Any more questions on that application? If you do, any of us come up with any questions between now and our next meeting, which lunch is usually very responsive and available, if you think of anything, so I also appreciate that, thank you for that.
You're welcome, so the, just, the state said that they will, ours was submitted by the due date for Halifax, they said that they will review all of them, they said that they have over 300, if we need any corrections to be made, they'll send it back to us, but then all of the Student Opportunity Plan Amendments will be posted publicly at the end of June, as the bill says, so I will also let you know if I hear back that we need to change any of the components, but I've met with them before, and I don't think that's the case, but if I come back, it's because they asked us to change something.
Dr. Brooks?
Thank you, I'd ask the chairman if he'll be okay if I could recognize, we're grateful, who has a peer-focused monitoring update for us?
Absolutely. Thank you for being here.
So school districts, we bring every member's group chair of the management system, this review... This review is a process that emphasizes elements most high student outcomes and alternative focuses each cycle. So every district is another group of criteria to review. The purpose of the DSM is to monitor compliance with regulatory requirements focusing on specifications of rights. This year's focus for special education was on IED process, IED timelines, special education programs and services, as well as proportionate share of equitable services. It came with 36 areas reviewed, DESI's not rating as commendable, implemented, partially implemented, or not implemented. Of the 36 areas, 35 of the areas associated with special education were solidly implemented. Just one area was noted as partially implemented, and this criteria's category was the procedure used to provide services to eligible students enrolled in private school at private expense. And as a result of that finding, we submitted a corrective action plan to show how we will be meeting that standard. Now, what is that standard? What does it mean? And what does the corrective action look like? Every district has an obligation to locate and evaluate students with disabilities that are either homeschooled or are enrolled at private expense at private school located within the district's boundaries. So for Silver Lake, that would be the Sacred Heart School at least. So districts must calculate and spend a proportionate share of federal grant funds to eligible services for eligible students. And again, those eligible students are students that have, that identify as having a disability and we, we received consent from the family to have a consultation and conversation around disability related needs. So the first step of the process is to identify all the eligible students. And we do this each year. When I look at the October 1 data, we collect all of the students that are being homeschooled, and we know the students from that list that have found eligible for IED services. And I also coordinate to collaborate with Sacred Heart so that they provide us the list of the names of the students from our communities that are attending school there and again, eligible for receiving special education services. The child count that I took back in, from October 1, showed us four students from either Halifax, Kingston, or Clinton that are attending Sacred Heart, and six students from our communities that are homeschooled. Once we determine who the eligible students are, the next step of the process is to engage a meaningful consultation with the parents and the private school representatives to have that conversation about how and if any eligible funding would help the students to obtain equitable services. At the end of this process, the district obtains written affirmation of the consultation, and we draft a service plan. The service plan is a bit different from the IED because it just outlines how and when we would be using a proportionate share. And this last final part that I was just discussing is why this category came to be just partially implemented. So we're looking to develop a finer-toothed process to have that meaningful consultation with the families and with the schools, and to develop that service plan to make sure that it will appropriately meet the needs of all of our students in our communities. So at the end of all of this, when I do submit the corrective action plan, it will show our procedure for equitable services, our description of how we're going to monitor this system internally, agendas for any of the meaningful consultations, signed written affirmations, and examples of outreach and vehicles of service for them. This report is public, it's available online, and it's also in the U.S. Senate. Any questions about the results of the TFM?
Do you have a question about the last part that we were just discussing? I'm just trying to understand. So if a student is at a private school, and the private school is not meeting the educational needs of the student, we step in and close that gap? I'm just trying to follow what's going on.
Something like that, yes. So private schools don't necessarily need to honor an IED.
Yep.
So some families choose not to disclose that they have an IED when they go to a private school. That's why we need to have the parents consent to collaborate and talk about what can be provided. So if we have students from our communities that are attending Sacred Heart and are struggling, say, in math, and all their IDPs show that they have math disabilities and need some assistance in math, then I meet with Sacred Heart, and then I meet with the parents of the students that are there to see how we might be able to develop a service plan to help boost them in that particular area. The support cannot be within their regular school day. It cannot replace the academic construction that they're receiving in Sacred Heart. It has to be something that is done above and beyond that. So it could look, for example, like an after-school tutor. So we actually recently just posted through the results of my conversations with Sacred Heart for a math tutor that could go to Sacred Heart and work with our kids at Sacred Heart after school. And that's on Power School, and anybody can apply. So if anybody is interested in being to reach Sacred Heart after school in the area of math by all means, check out the Power School posting, and you can apply.
I have a question in terms of the funding source for that. So because we have four districts within one region, let's say hypothetically, there's two Clinton students, a Kingston student, three Halifax students that require this intervention at Sacred Heart, how do we fund that position?
Through the, so the 240 grants gives a spreadsheet that embedded in it, I have to answer a series of questions, and it's each very specific to the town. That's how we come up with the amount of money to be reserved for proportionate share. So if we have two students from Halifax, one from, something three from Kingston, whatever it is, they go on separate spreadsheets. And each spreadsheet, each town is then calculating a portion of that money that we should be reserving. So that's how we come up with the final total of money that needs to be reserved. And then it can't be so itemized that, you know, only X number of dollars can go to two Halifax students that are in Sacred Heart. That's how the money's calculated. But then the money distributed is dependent upon all of those parent and private school consultations. We might have, for example, a pocket of money because we have so few homeschooling, and they might not want any of the funding to go toward them. In that case, I can free up the funding to go to other families.
So regardless of whether or not the family chooses to use those services, we still have to have them available, and then the funding source can be moved to a student in need that whose family is requesting that.
Yes.
So what they're not, it's not predominantly, or it's not solely paid for by a grant?
Yes.
Oh, it is?
It's all through the IDA, federal grant.
Okay.
So that's part, that's basically conditioned with the grant. We're going to give you all this money, but you have to reserve a portion of the money from this grant for this purpose.
Okay, okay.
And like I said, they have the embedded calculation within the grant, so it's not a dollar amount that I make up.
That's my last question. You mentioned homeschooling and private schooling. What about charter school?
Charter schools have their own application to work in.
Okay, so this doesn't include a student in a charter school whose needs are not being met educationally?
Nope.
Okay.
No, the charter school does their own. Every district and every charter school is responsible to calculate proportionate share. So the charter schools are doing their own.
Okay. So just to sum up right now, based on the findings in this report, that's the one piece that we're lacking in is actively reaching out to the community and finding where this need may be.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else have any questions? Sometimes it takes a while for it to release, yeah. This is a lot.
This is not easy. This is rather complicated, which I think is also why it's just partially implemented. Has a sense to our team.
Well, you just rounded off nearly forty areas, and almost all of them but one are fully implemented. So we are grateful for your work in that regard. Anything else you do for our district and our children? So thank you for that.
Thank you.
So the only other item tonight is our long-term sub language. I bring this up tonight because some of our schools have had difficulties attracting long-term substitute teachers. And just to give you some background, long-term substitutes have bachelor's degrees. And we try to find long-term subs who are licensed either in the grade level or subject matter. In fact, if you're going to be a long-term sub for 90 days in a single teacher's classroom, you have to be licensed in that subject matter. So I give you that background because currently, our long-term sub language says that beginning on the 21st workday, we'll be paid a bachelor's step one. I'd like to ask the committee to make us more competitive and consider starting long-term subs at bachelor's step one, recognizing that this would be an increase from ninety-five dollars a day in Halifax. Whereas a bachelor's step one is two hundred and seventy-two dollars. So it would be a substantial increase, and it would be something that we could revisit and change if, in fact, it becomes easier to obtain long-term substitute teachers with bachelor's degrees. But I wanted you to consider that. Other districts in our communities are also considering the same. And by that, I mean Clinton, Halifax, and Silver Lake, they did not get voted. I want to present that to you tonight. It's something that we can put back on the agenda next time. If you're not ready to put it to a vote tonight, but I wanted you to understand why we were requesting it.
Do we have positions now at the elementary school that we can't fill, long-term subs? I'll be having that issue right now. Like, do we, do we need, do I need to make a motion tonight so we can follow the position?
Not right this second, no.
Do you, do you have any known needs of needing long-term subs?
For this year?
For this year.
This year? Not that I'm like right on the spot, aware of, no, but they, they could come up at it at some time.
So if we vote this right now, it's not going to cost anything? Because we don't have the need, but this would give you the ability to compete if the need arises?
Absolutely.
Would it affect someone who is currently a long-term sub? Would it affect them?
No, only if you made it retroactive, which, again, what some school committees are considering is putting this in place for next year, rather than presenting issue for current long-term subs who would feel that they should also be paid or compensated at this rate. So that's why I'm bringing it up now, because I don't foresee the, the need going away next year. I think we're going to continue to struggle with long-term substitutes for some time, so.
I do know next year, we will definitely need long-term subs.
Do we currently have a long-term sub in the building right now?
Yes.
Do. I would make a motion to approve their request.
So, sorry, just to back up a second, so it would go from ninety-five dollars a day to two hundred and seventy-two dollars a day?
Well, I'm giving you what currently the bachelor's step one is per DM. So right now, it's, right now, for Halifax, it's fifty thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars divided by one hundred and eighty-four is two hundred and seventy-two dollars. So that's an estimate based upon this year's bachelor's step one. So yes, it would be an increase of about that much for long-term subs for next year if that's what your motion is. So I would also need to know whether or not this would be put into place moving forward, or if this is something that you would want to put into place for next year.
Have we made a motion to put it in place for next year so it's done?
Is it part of the budget already?
It is not part of the budget currently. But oftentimes with long-term subs, we do have people around these different savings from that.
Okay.
So it wouldn't impact the day-to-day subs, that would hopefully be at the ninety-five dollars a day. So it's just those that are going to be assigned as a long-term sub that those 21 days will be then in phase now.
So there's a motion on the floor. We need a second before we finish this conversation. There's no second, there's no vote.
There's no conversation.
There's no conversation. Okay, there's no second, so there's no vote. Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention, and in fact, I am open to it being on a future agenda, but in my personal opinion, we can have a larger discussion surrounding the impact on the budget before we can take a vote like that, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you for being... But how do we learn more about it? Like, you know, sort of, well, I guess if we'll have a discussion next time?
Yes.
So we kind of understand the full impact of...
Yes.
Okay.
One follow-up question. Is it 21 days of work, or is it 21 days of...
Counting.
Counting, there's... So it'll need 15 days of work?
It's 21 days of work. So 21 days and two hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-two cents is five thousand, seven hundred, twenty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents. That's a three thousand, seven hundred, thirty-four dollar, twenty-two cents difference if we, for those 21 days.
Is that all three points? Dr. Brooke?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Before we adjourn to executive session, as Mr. Bodry noted, on April 15th, it's code Friday, so there is no school. The 18th to the 22nd, April is spring vacation. And we are posted for our next school committee meeting on May 9th, but that is the night of Halifax Town Meeting, which starts at 7:30? 6:30? 6:30.
6:30.
Okay. Thank you for doing that, actually. 6:30 on May 9th is our town meeting. With that, I would like to make a motion to go into executive session.
I would move to go into executive session.
Second.
Oh, okay.
You have three, you don't take it.
And then Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy for respective collective bargaining, contract negotiation. And also, an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection A, Subsection 7, comply with or act under the authority of any general or specific law. Approval of the executive session meeting minutes from March 7.
Go ahead, Mark, now you can say it. Second. Uh, we will not be resuming to regular session for adjournment. We will adjourn from right in front of executive session. Yep.
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
Somer, yes?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you for doing that.